Want to come back in front of us?
Y'all have approved up to 25,000.
Okay, okay, just making sure. Okay, no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, you want to move on to item two?
Item C2 is approve city manager to initiate bid process for Phase Two of the Bowie Nature Park paving and parking lot. The comments that we gathered from the, on the park commission, and I'll just read what was, what was discovered. It says, "Dan Eubanks of Tennessee Valley Paving Company was contracted on the February 17th, 2015." And they're the people that handled Phase One of the project, which involved the widening of Bowie Lake Road from Highway 100 up to the entrance of the park, along with construction of a sidewalk running parallel to the road and leading into the park as far as the nature center. Eubanks gave a rough ballpark estimate of $25,000 for Phase Two, which further, when he actually went out there and looked at it, he said the project would be around $30,000. And that would provide a paved surface from the gravel Y intersection with the entry road extending in a southwesterly direction as far as the entrance to the nature park parking lot, including the parking lot itself. Now, one of the things that we discovered, and I believe this is correct, that originally Phase Two was going to cost $59,000. So, the lower cost of oil rate now is putting the city in a great position. And this is why we were recommending that you go forward with this, because if we could save around $29,000, that would be really great. That's all I have on that one.
Okay, any discussion?
What's been approved for that part of the project? What amount has been approved for that part of the project?
Sort of. There's no amount been approved for that, for me.
Will you move forward in the bid process?
Yeah, I have to go through a bid process, I believe.
If, just to add to the knowledge base, if you were in the park this week because of spring break and the pretty weather, we were inundated, and our potholes in that part of the driveway were just terrible. And we would fill them up, and they would be washed out. And so, the idea that we can save the money is a great opportunity for us, but added on top of that, it's, it's, it's time. We, we, we need to finish that part of the, part of the process.
I agree.
Okay, so, the same first and second carries, so we'll just take a vote on item two. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to...
C3.
C3, yeah.
Adopt park brochure as public distributor overview of document for the city marketing. Could we have the next slide? This is the cover page for the document. The idea is, is to distribute this as a marketing tool for the city of Fairview for its park system. As we all, we all know that parks and recreation is, is a really a magnet to draw people to your city. Whether you live here, or you're just visiting, it's, it becomes a destination. So, to put this into a brochure and hand out, I think will be very productive. Next slide. Skipping over a couple of pages, this is, this is probably a, this is a simpler version of that parks development chart. It's a little easier for the general public to read, and it's included in with the, with this document. I believe it's 17 pages long. Again, this is an asset to enhance the image of, of Fairview. So with that, I would ask you to approve as presented.
Okay, any discussion?
I guess a question from Mr. Hall. This is just adopting the document, but when, how many, and how much will it cost to produce those? That's 17 pages.
Bring Keith up and see if he has any ideas. I've not been reported on any costs on it.
He doesn't. He just said he doesn't.
Doesn't have any idea. I will be glad to get some cost.
My assumption would be it would go into a folder, a pamphlet, to be passed out, much smaller than what we have here.
Right.
The idea is that, of course, it would be a, a type would be shrunk down some, and it would be a front and back document.
So, not 17 pages?
So, it would only be maybe seven or eight pages, but it's not going to be a brochure. It would be more of a, like a bound document. And all I did was call Staples and asked Staples. And, and it would run us, of course, the more we buy, the less it runs us, you know? But to, to, to have a couple hundred printed, we're probably talking $100 to, and, and then they would be available to the public at the park, at the nature center, at City Hall, if somebody came in to ask, maybe we'd give some to the Chamber of Commerce. It's just the idea is that if, if somebody came in today and said, "What else is there besides Bowie Park?", we don't have anything to give them. We don't have anything that talks about what we're doing at History Village. We don't have anything that talks about what we're doing out at Veterans Memorial. We don't have anything about what we're doing with the survey information. So, we saw it primarily as a document that could be put on our website. We also saw it as we could have some printed, limited printed copies that would be available to people that, you know, came into those places, or maybe put them at the realtors, some realtors' offices, or whatever, if they were interested. And somebody said, "Well, what, you know, what are some of the things that are going on with the city?", and we'd have something to give them rather than just word of mouth. And that's where it comes from. And it would be strictly, on when we did it, would be strictly when the city felt that they had that, so it might be next fiscal year that we have to wait, given what Tom reported earlier. So, it's just the idea, it's the concept of having the document that the commission was really wanting to get the board's endorsement for, because it would be representing, you know, our city and our Parks Department.
I kind of have, I mean, I like the idea of a document and being together. I do think, just with having a marketing background, that that is not for the average person. That would be more as businesses coming in, people wanting to move here. But I would love to see a brochure put together, something, because they're only going to look so long. So, I mean, with having that many pages. So, as far as a working document, I love it, but I would like to see maybe the park board put a friendly little brochure, something not as, you know, I don't know what size y'all are going to do, but if it's a, you know, piece of paper and several pieces of paper, it may not be productive. But I see needs to have in it, just, you know, I see it more as something we can give some of these developers and people that are looking to move here, and just informational. But I don't want to take away from actually coming up with a brochure. Something that we can put at the rest stops, and, you know, something that we could...
This would be great to put on the website.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful for the website. And it's great information. I think it's great for the citizens to be able to say, "Wait, this is, you know, the vision." And I think for that aspect, you know, we do, when money allows, we'll put some out and see what use is and, that we have for it. But, you know, I'm just throwing that out there as far as that goes.
Let me amend the motion, then, to say that we want to go ahead and attach it to the website as it is, and that we'll work to develop a smaller, more concise brochure that we could print up, rather than try to print this up. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I agree. There's a gentleman that had a comment, and we normally don't, from that, but did you want to say something? I mean, I don't want to ignore you, but...
This, this really addresses the quality of life here at Fairview.
Yes.
And these are great for mayors, when people, companies ask for it.
Yes.
It's a good mailer to send to them as part of a package.
Uh-huh.
Most cities, even Nashville, when I was in Chamber there, they had a package like this, where they had these type of things put in the mail.
Yeah, I agree, thank you. I do, that's kind of how I see it, is, you know, when people, I know a lot of times when I was at the Chamber, people would call and want information on our city. Something like that would be huge. So, I think, I think there's a need, but I don't want to steer away from a brochure style, just quick blurbs that we can put at the rest stops, and, you know, some of the visitor centers and stuff like that, I think, would be good. But we can go ahead and vote on this and discuss that later. That's something maybe the park board could say, "What would a brochure look like?", you know? And, any other discussion? Okay.
The last item is C4, Adopt Bowie Park Master Plan. Just a little history on this. It was first initiated, I believe, by the park commission, and the park staff did a lot of extensive input into this document. Surveyed, reviewed, it's been backed to the park commission for revision and recommendation. I think it's a great document. Some of the items in there we're doing already. We just need to, again, have the foundation, have a document that no matter who's sitting up, or you folks are, or staff, will have something to follow for future. The, the only thing that's lacking right now in there is, in this document, is the forest management plan. But that, as soon as the land trust and the city come together on what that's going to look like, and how to, how to obtain that, we've put it, we recommended putting an appendix B in there, so that can be added later. It, it's not good to take and hold it up until everything gets done, and that just seems to get lost, other things come up. And I think it's really important to have this plan in place. So with that, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you.
Okay, any discussion?
Mayor, if I could. This is one of those things that never quite got to the final closing action. The document has, has been looked at by two separate park commissions, both approved it. They are working from it. It, it's already in, in play. And so, as a board, we just need to, again, adopt it so that, so that that becomes the, the blueprint by which validates them working.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that would be item D, discuss and take action on the redesignation of the out parcel for Parks Department and Commission jurisdiction to the original designation as public safety, or safety slash public works jurisdiction for sale.
Thank you, ma'am. One of the, the reason I brought this up, and I brought this up as a commissioner, not as a member of the park commission, as you saw when Mr. Rowe put up the chart, the out parcel right now is under the, is considered part of the park system. And in looking at each one of these, and doing my homework for that, that committee, I became concerned about the out parcel, and what we currently use the out parcel for, and what would be the cost factor of trying to do that. And so, I have come to the conclusion that, as a board of commissioners, we need to rethink that original decision and leave it where it was originally, and that was used for Public Works, who is the only people that are currently using it, with some, some maybe potential somewhere down the line of, of use by the public safety as a training facility, or firing range, or possibly an impound lot. My rationale for that is two things. One is that, in order to, if we stop using it for public works, in order to move forward with any kind of action for a park, we're going to have to take our refuge somewhere else. Mr. Paisley and myself did some background work on that, and that alone is going to cost us, right now, costs us nothing, or very little, because of its close proximity to the city. If we have to take that to the Williamson County landfill, it's going to cost us about $25,000 a year, in a lost salary opportunity, mileage on the trucks, and the fees for, for dumping the amount of refuge that we will be doing there. I don't think that's something that we want to do right now. The other part of that, and to, and to me is, is, is equally important, is that we have been using that as a landfill for many things, most of which you think of as it being okay, because it's like a roadkill, and that sort of thing. But it has, over the course of time, according to two studies I read, one by Kansas State University, and one by Texas A&amp;M University, that it, it makes it uninhabitable for humans. It turns the groundwater into a toxic environment, the amount of leaves, the acidity in the leaves. And we would be looking at somewhere around $100,000, somewhere between $75 and $100,000 cleanup, before we could ever even consider putting that on, to any public use. So, given those two facts, I really felt that we needed to just rethink our decision in that area, and move it back to where it currently resides, because I don't see it financially feasible for the city, but I also don't think that more effort needs to be put into it at this time. We have, we don't have the other resources available to do that, and we do have other pieces of property where we could put parkland.
Move to approve.
It has been many things over the years since I've been here, and it has been deemed public safety in the past. It has been deemed public works, which it's currently being used. Just a point of clarification, for those that don't know, it was actually left out of the land trust for that reason, when the park was placed in a trust. So, I think, I think we're on the right track.
I just have a few comments on this. I, I really hate to see us take it out of the park system, just because there's so much discussion that's, it's gone on. And as far as pub, like gun range, and some of the things that were discussed before, I think y'all made accommodations through the Dixon Water Authority. If it's such a hazard, I worry about it being next to our park. If whatever we're doing to it is making the land not usable, then we need to probably stop doing it, if it backs up to our park. So, that would be my first concern. I'd love to see the studies. I'm not, I'm not sure it's necessary, because there's nothing on the table to change it. We keep changing it back and forth, back and forth, and if there's nothing really on the table, not sure why we would need to do that. I still think it's a perfect piece of property for something that would complement the park. And I think we need to be cautious on what we put there. Any other discussion? Any comments to anything I have to say? Okay, with that being said, I would like to go down saying that I would like the articles and the consideration of what we're actually using the park for, or that piece of parcel. If you don't mind, I would, I would like to read up and...
I'd be happy to email them to you.
Yeah, because we have other land that we do, we could use the, for storing and stuff like that. So, you know, why not? I just think that's a perfect place to do something that's very flattering to the park.
Mayor, if I could, I would add one comment, that Dr. Bowie herself did not consider this part of her park, and to the point that she sold 16 acres that borders the out parcel to a, to another landowner that's currently still owned by that person that's at the corner of Dice Lampley there, and Crowcut. And it's fully contiguous with that, where it is split off, it does not join our park, since the road goes in between it. And she did not consider it part of her park. Now, it was transferred to us because she had not sold that part of it at her death, but that's how we ended up with it.
Yeah, well, and I do realize it's not part of the park, but I just think it's a piece of property we own that we could use to do something good for the community.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with that.
So, that's my only concern. Any other comments? Commissioner Vassell, did you have any other use in mind for this at the time, or just continue to use it as a dumping ground for...
No, ma'am, I don't. I just think that the parks shouldn't be under the Parks Department, it should be under the jurisdiction of Public Works and/or Public Safety. I don't, I don't have any personal...
Do we have to put it under, like Deer, Deer Ridge has no designation, 96, there's, we have several properties. Why do we have to classify it?
I believe it's, because it's already being used for something, it's not a blank space like Deer Ridge is. It's already got refuge on, on the property, and what we're looking at is to further, to clean it up and do something else with it, make it part of the, where the community can go to it. I think is what difficulty is going to be in with it, and where the cost factor is going in, compared to the other pieces of property that we have.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'm not sure about the property on Deer Ridge. It might be either under Public Works or under the Fire Department currently.
I would say it might probably be under the Fire Department, because that's what it was purchased for. What I might add is, it's, the out parcel has been used for several years for what it's been used for now.
Right.
I mean, this goes back numerous years, long before I was a commissioner, you know? So that tells me way back in the 90s, or no longer, so...
Yeah, I was just, as we were discussing, I'm like, why are we having to decide? I mean, there's no pressure anyway. I don't know why we have to declare what every piece of property is for. It's just city property that we own, and as something comes up, it could come in front of the board and be discussed. So, that was my only point. And I just came, I really came up with it just through discussing. I'm like, why do we even do that?
May I offer something that may clarify a little bit? There's no state statute, or any charter requirement, that any of that property be designated for anything. It's under the control of the city in general, which means it's under the control of this board. I think the reason that, in the past, they've designated for somebody is, if something happens on that, and it needs to be cleaned up, you don't want to send somebody out there from every department that the city has. And some departments are more uniquely qualified, and more uniquely equipped to handle that. And if there's something that they need to go out there for, you look and see who it's assigned to, and that's the unit that we, the, of the city that would be designated to go out and, and take care of that problem. Now, there's nothing that says that you couldn't say, look at it and say, "Okay, it's a, something that the grays need to be spread, that's public works", and you can make that determination at that time. But I think the reason it was, was so that you would know in advance who's going to take care of what. But there's no, there's nothing in the charter, or nothing in state law that requires that every piece of property that any municipality owns. Wouldn't make any sense, just as an example, wouldn't make any sense to put Public Safety and the Public Works Department in charge of the operation of Bowie Park in general, or the Police Department, because that's just not what they do.
Thank you. Okay, we had a first and second. Is, who was the first and second?
I made the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That brings us to... Yeah, I was marking off my thing. Okay, that brings us to Tenny. I guess I'm being too slow for some of y'all tonight. Discuss and take action, and rescinding all prior Board of Commissioners approval or direction given in the matter of the Bowie Nature Park Forest Management Plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, this is just another cleanup item. It, in the last park commission, it, meeting, it came to my attention that we still had on the books the original approval, approval of the plan that was not approved by the land trust. And so, rather than, as we are proceeding down to develop a new plan, rather than have an approved plan on the books, it's simply to rescind that plan, and the subordinate plans, which were a burn plan, and a, another invasive plant eradication plan. So, it's just simple, it's, it's simply just cleanup as we move toward putting in place a different plan. That's, that's all it amounts to.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a first and second discussion.
I have no, another discussion, other than to, this strictly, strictly involves the forest management plan, or our forest management plan, while we're developing a new one. That's all I got.
We just take that one off the books.
Just for clarification.
So we don't have to follow that one.
My only concern is, is this, why would we do that? Is it because of y'all's meeting with the, that y'all had, you were talking about last week? Why are we removing it? So it's no longer a valid plan?
Right. It, it no longer serves any purpose. It's on the books as an, as what we will be doing, and we are not going to do that, because...
It doesn't comply with what the land trust wants. Is that not correct?
Right. It's not in compliance, and it calls for certain actions to be taken, and we're not going to take the action. So, we don't need to have something on the books, we have no intention of doing.
When are y'all having your next meeting with the land trusts? Are they going to have a part? Because this is stemmed from your meeting, that y'all got a letter, y'all had a meeting, right? And so, they said that plan needs, is not going to work.
Yes. They set down guidelines for the forest management person that we had, he was sitting in that meeting also, and he's come back with a new estimate for what the situation, the way they want it, the, the guidelines that they want in the forest management plan. And so, I think her name was Audra Led, that was pretty specific on how they wanted it to be done. She eventually got the information to Jonathan Boggs with his firm, and he has sent me back an estimate. And that's what we'll need for approval to go forward with the plan that the land trust wants.
Yeah. Well, this is my only hangup. What I don't understand about this, is I've sat on the park board for a long time, and I've sat up here. And we had forced, you know, we had all kinds of people come up and tell us what to do. And the land trust was involved. I mean, they even came and sat in the conference room. So I don't understand what's different now. Is there somebody new that...
Apparently, when we sent this forward to go ahead with the, the pine thinning of six areas, Emily Parrish come back and said this did not meet their requirements. So, we set the meeting, and they sent Audra Led in, and Jonathan Boggs came in representing the firm that was going to do the, the forest management plan. So, she set down the guidelines for him to draw up his estimate. And the last meeting, we did not have that estimate, because it was more involved by far than what he had been, you know, told. Now, they will not recognize the state of Tennessee to draw up that they want a registered forest manager. So, the, the work with Mr. Pyatt, and, you know, others that has been named in the past, the, this is the guidelines that the forest management, I mean, the land trust has set down. If you want to, and bring Keith up and let him explain a little more about their process of that, if you'd like for me to bring him up.
Yeah, that would be great. The, you know, the only thing that gets me is, I'm just confused. How do, how do we spend so much time talking about something? Land trusts being involved in some of the conversation, having foresters come up, and now we're having to throw it out the window? now we're having to throw it out the window? So, if you can enlighten me, I would love you to do that.
Well, from what we're sort of understanding from the meeting, and we're allowed by the Land Trust to go ahead with the test site. And further down on the, the letter that approved the test site to, for us, it, it did state in there that moving forward with any more forest cutting or, you know, clearing, whatever you guys would like to call it, it stated that we had to have a more comprehensive plan.
I gotcha.
Like a tree inventory and different things like that so that we knew and understand, but it clearly does state that in there, and we never caught that. And this is just going back and trying to get back on track with it and get a forester and get it to where we need to be.
Okay, that makes sense to me. I just, I couldn't wrap my hand, but test site's the key word. That's what it said when you read the paperwork. And what they're saying is, no, this is not going to work, and we won't.
Right.
A better plan. Okay. Okay, any other discussions? Okay, and let me see. Are we going to... Did we talk about getting the, how we're going to pay for this?
We're not to that item. This is just strictly the rescission of the previously approved forest management plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Bussell. I'm sorry. I was trying to make sure I didn't, that wasn't the one. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That is item 10F, discuss and take action on approving the hiring of the registered forester to produce the Bowie Nature Park Management Plan in accordance with the Land Trust of Tennessee Guidelines, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And this is my last one, so somebody else can talk. But the bottom line on this is that we brought this up after the meeting. It was either last session or two sessions ago, and we had to defer it because City Manager Hall had not gotten the estimate from Mr. Boggs.
Jonathan Boggs.
Boggs.
Yes.
On what it would cost. And we were waiting for him because he's the one that has been contacted by the city at least twice, if not three times, to be involved in it, and he's already familiar with our park and so forth and so on. And I believe Mr. Hall now has the information about what he hopes to, what he would charge to do the service.
The estimate for what the Land Trust is requiring, and his bid before was $8,500. The new bid is $11,350, which would be paid for out of the park fund. So, y'all just need to guide me in which direction I need to go.
So, having said that, and having already mentioned that Mr. Boggs is the most familiar, therefore, we feel like he could produce the plan in a shorter amount of time because of that and the cost of having to go out for bid, I make a motion that we sole source this and allow the city manager to employ Mr. Boggs as the registered forester for this effort for the $11,300. Was that what you said, Mr. Hall?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Okay, first and second. Any discussion?
What was the figures that we were talking about even on the last plan?
His last estimate was $8,500.
No, no, I'm talking about for completing the plan. The different phases that we're going to go through if this is, if he puts forth a plan with the trust.
Right.
What's it going to cost the city?
$11,350.
Not for the work to be done. I'm talking about the total cost.
He's talking about the work to be done after the plan is presented and passed by the Land Trust, and we have people...
You're talking about the logging part?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the one through six. His plan should state that he has a logger that is hoping to sell the pulp wood that might recover a big portion of this.
So, we are back in the business of where we could possibly break even?
Possibly so, yes.
Where before we would have made...
The logger, the logger that he had when we met back in the last winter or early spring, it was off cold out the other day, so I've forgotten which one it was. But that logger said that, where the, the test site had already been accomplished, and he said, "I've got a good market for this type of wood." And he said, "I won't leave it looking like the, the test site looks." That's, that was the exact words he gave me. Now, that was Mr. Boggs' logger that he would be dealing with.
And that's going to something, that's going to have to come out for further approval to the board.
I'd say if he, if he takes care of this, this, and tells me that he's going to cut this price down, I would say I would have the authority to move forward with it as long as the Land Trust is good.
I guess I'm still not expressing myself like I should.
The Land Trust will have to approve his plan.
Very good. And he's going to do all the work for $11,000.
The, he's going to draw the forest management plan.
I just, still not my question. What's it going to cost us to complete those plans?
We don't know as far as the logging part goes.
Yeah, we've had a figure before.
No, if I, if I, I think I can answer your question, Vice Mayor. This first phase is to have this more comprehensive plan. That's going to cost us $11,500, 300, or whatever it is. Once this plan comes in and is approved by both the city and the Land Trust, then there will be executables within that plan. We will determine as a board, in conjunction with our own park staff, as to when we execute. Some of those things will require us to approve funding, such as burning, where we have to pay the state's fee to have their burn people come out. Some of the other things, like pine thinning, we will be able to address how we want to do that at that time, and we may very well be in a situation where the logger pays us and we doesn't cost us anything. So, what you're asking for, the forest management plan, will provide those kinds of details so that when we see it, we will know, somewhat like an engineering plan, we will know what it's going to cost us to execute on that forest management plan.
Thank you very much for that clarification. My, my problem is really not with the forest management plan, but I remember before we were talking some numbers for going in and doing some, or was, some, some of them were astronomical numbers. I'll look that back up, but I'll drop it for right this second because we have to come back to it for approval.
Well, I, I agree. I, I remember they were talking hundreds of thousands of dollars about doing all of this stuff, and we, and it was part of the reason, I think, we moved to the state and all of that stuff was to get a difference of opinion, but...
That's, that's where my problem is.
We're basically back to start at square one, where when this plan comes in, then we'll have that information, we'll be able to operate off of that again.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
May I add something, Mayor?
Sure.
Also, well, I just, part of the clarification of, of your question, also, when this plan comes in, once you review this plan, you may very well have to put, depending on what he's have, wanting you to do, you may very well have to put some of those items out for bid because, as Commissioner Bussell said, the, the forester is familiar with the job. That's a personal services contract, and it's not required to be bid if it's in the best interest of the city. It may be somewhat more difficult when you start trying, if you were trying to sole source log cutting, because that's not a personal services contract.
I, I don't really, you know, a lot of this is just, I was sitting there thinking, I'm in a different room, and I maybe, I don't know, like, there's bids and numbers and meetings and, you know, and I'm thinking, what's going on here? I mean, why am I in the dark if we already have prices and, you know? I try to keep my, stay abreast on things that are going on, and, you know, I'm just been boggled by this process. It really wasn't discussed in the park board meeting, and I know we brought it up last week, but it sounds like maybe I'm not being informed on something. I'm a little confused to be sitting up here, knowing that there was meetings with the, you know, the forester, and there's quotes, and I'm just a little confused.
You've got a total new ballgame. You're getting, you're getting a plan for how to play it. Right now, that plan is the only thing that's the board's considering.
So, with the, when Mr. Vice Mayor Sutton was talking about a meeting, or when you were talking about it was cold out, when was that?
I'd say several years ago because this gentleman here has met with Andrew several times on this same, same situation.
But he didn't meet with you?
Until recently.
Okay, and when did you recently meet with him?
March 4th.
When?
March 4th.
Last year?
No, this year. That's when we met with...
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
That's when we met with the Land Trust people, and we tried to go...
What's up, honey?
Ma'am.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's when we tried to initiate the plan that we thought was the, the $8,500 y'all approved back last fall to move forward with. So, I delayed on that because I was trying to save spending any money right then. So, once we called to try to move forward with it, then Keith checked with the Land Trust, and that's when they come back and said, "This plan is not something we can approve." We couldn't move forward with any plan until the Land Trust moves, tells us that we can move forward with anything. So, once we met with Audra Ladd, then that's when she said she would get the information to Mr. Boggs for what she wanted in the plan. So, that's what he's come back now with. He hasn't come back with a plan, he's come back with an estimate of what it's going to cost to do this plan.
Okay. Yeah, but I have one more question on that. Did we actually have, have we ever paid a forester to come up with a plan?
Not in my memory of my...
Okay, so this is the first time we've moved forward since the test site. Okay.
We've had help from State Tennessee, I think, forest before. And I think just the way I'm understanding it is because of item E and the forest, the Land Trust people making part of the, of moving forward that we have to hire a registered forester, and this is just doing that. That's the first step we have to do, and it's because they require it.
Yeah, that, I mean, that was last time, too. I think with the test site, that kind of threw me off on where we were, probably thinking we were farther along and already had the proper approvals. Okay, do we have a first and second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other discussion? One last thing is, the reason you're picking this one particular guy, he was on the list for Tennessee, the State of Tennessee, I know they give you a list.
Yes, but I also tried to get the one that done the ecological study out of Mississippi.
Gotcha.
You don't have too many registered foresters.
Okay.
And I called him several times. He was interested, but I never got an estimate from him on the, on the last deal. So, this was the only one that did reply, reply to my request.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, discuss and take action on bid approval for resurfacing grant.
I'll, I'll pass this forward to Mr. Umber. He's got the information on it as far as the state.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. This...
I'm sorry. Thank you, Vice Mayor. This, we're expecting the state of Tennessee to approve or to certify our, our bid, our low bid on this project just within a few days, and what we'd like to do then is go ahead with the award so we can get this project underway. It came in way under the cost estimate, so we feel like it's, you know, and everything has been set up, our GAN and everything else, so we're ready to go on the project. We'd like for it to be approved contingent upon the state's certification of the bid.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that will be item 11, City Managers Items for Discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Just one thing tonight, I was called by Chief Travis O'Neill a while ago. Sean Sullivan, Lieutenant Sean Sullivan of the Fire Department, has passed his fire marshal's test. We now have a certified fire marshal on staff, and Travis will be going away to that school in two weeks, and hopefully the chief will be certified on that also. So, I just wanted to pass that along. And that's all I have tonight, and I just want to thank everybody for all their support through the holiday here with the spring break and everything, so I want to, hope everyone gets back safe. So, thank everyone tonight. Thank you.
May I, if I can, can you get a, a report on the, the hearing, thing where we're talking about having possible, for people that have problems hearing, the update on that? Because I know we've been working on it for, seems like a couple of years now.
I don't get anything back on that stuff, Brandy. She had...
Can we get a report on that for next week? Thank you.
Okay, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing further tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bussell?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Sutton?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, let's make sure y'all can hear me. As I got cut off last week, the audio did not work, and I have no good explanation why, and I don't think the city staff has a good explanation on why that happened. But I did resemble a bobblehead for three minutes as I discussed the fact that I did not want to be belittled and that I wanted us to work together, and I, I wanted to be able to ask questions, and I would, I felt like it was my duty to be here and ask questions about items that I had concerns with. As I said before, we're not going to always agree, and that's fine, and I respect y'all's position as I always will, and I respect the process. And this is what it is, it's a process. You get five different people with different opinions and different views, and you get up here and you discuss to make the best decision for the citizens of the city. And I believe in the process. Wish I was more, you know, on the three ends versus two and, you know, but, you know, sometimes it's what it is, and I feel like that if we did our homework and we asked the questions, then we have done our job. Lot of great things going on in the city. Very proud of the staff. I never want the staff to feel that my questions reflect their abilities. I spend a lot of time, especially up here in City Hall, with the staff members, and, you know, I see how hard they work, and I'm very grateful for that. And, you know, they do so many things that you just don't see, and I probably didn't even see before I came up here as much as I do, and for that, I always appreciate that. And I guess with that being said, I just hate going backwards with the park. You know, I feel like that we worked so hard to get that plan, but sometimes when you don't cross your Ts and you dot your Is, you miss things, and obviously, that's what we must have done with this test site and not, the only thing being approved. And I apologize to the citizens and the people that spent so much time up here trying to get a direction that we are having to start over. With that being said, I would like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and if I have a motion to adjourn, then, and one other question. Channel 19's up, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Equipment, are we done?
As far as I know, I haven't had any report on that right now, so hopefully our equipment's in good shape. We do have warranty on certain items, and so, and they're giving me that list as far as what items we have under warranty.
Okay. Okay, just to the citizens, we're doing our best, obviously. I mean, these guys are working hard, and, you know, I don't know what's going on with equipment. I mean, it just, sometimes life happens, you know? But either way, I appreciate the hard work in trying to get everything right, and hopefully we're on the right track. So, with that being said, if I can get a motion.
Ms. Stewart?
Move to adjourn.
Okay.